is the historian and curator for the Cowan Pottery Museum. And he is here to speak to us today about the work he's been doing. So is there a way to put Greg in the big screen and minimize all of us?
I think we have to do that.
Okay. So Greg, whenever you're ready, we're interested to hear what you have to say.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you again for having me. So I last spoke to the board in 2019. And obviously, a few things have changed since 2019 or so. I have a little bit of update of just different things that have been going on, at least especially within the last year. This past August, we did actually celebrate 100 years of Cowan in Rocky River. And originally, it was going to be planned for an in-person event, but obviously with current restrictions, that was not possible. So myself and the Cowan team created a virtual experience with different promotions across our social media. Also during that month, we launched our first two virtual exhibitions of items from our archives. And that was really made possible because of Chanel and the amazing work that she did on that webpage. In January, we also launched another webpage, very much thanks to Chanel. And it was actually Cowan at Home Resource Page. This page actually has different Cowan-inspired craft and art activities and educational activities that we've had as handouts, so that way they're free for individuals to download and participate. Though they don't have the supplies that the original crafts do, they do tell you what you're going to need to actually complete the different basic lesson plans. On February 18th, I did have the chance to speak at the Kansas State University Beach Museum of Art, at least virtually. As part of their exhibition, Whalen Gregory Art Deco Ceramics and the Atomic Impulse, I gave the talk Whalen Gregory and Cowan Pottery Studio. So that happened live, and it's also archived on the Beach Museum's YouTube page. So Cowan programs, this is probably where the most change has happened. Crafting of the Curator has continued on, though it did shift from being a monthly event to happening every session of Inside View programming. So we just have it every four months rather than every month. This was to allow for essentially larger programs and also expand out to doing an all-ages programming style rather than just being an adult program. Now, when the building closed this past summer, we actually had to pivot and shift to a craft kit model where all the supplies were given to the participants. And also, there was a small write-up actually about a piece in our collection or one of the artists who are featured in our collection that actually inspired the art activity. And that has been really well received. We typically have it set for 50 individuals, and there's a waitlist every time. Actually, this past time, we got to do 72 kits, so that was very exciting. Now, on a more sad news, of course, obviously, right now, the Cowan Classic Film Festival and tours right now are suspended. The biggest obstacle with our tours is, of course, the nature of our collection and the way that it is observable throughout the library makes social distancing very difficult. Now, with programming, we also saw another shift. We did have to cancel last year's Cowan Symposium last April. We were, of course, the building was closed at that time. But this year, the Cowan Symposium is not going to be in May, but going to be in August. And it is going to be virtual. We will be actually having a multi-day virtual event. We are having two artists speak about their practice. I'll be re-presenting the Whalen Gregory and Cowan Pottery Studio lecture and give individuals time to ask questions. And we're also going to be having the Antique River Show, which is going to take the place of our Antiques appraisal. We will have an antique appraiser actually take submissions from the public, and they will give more information about some randomly selected items. Additionally, this summer, part of the Cowan team, which, you know, I apologize, I probably should have led with that. The other thing that happened this year is that there has been the formation of a Cowan Pottery Museum team, which does have members across the different departments in the library. And this was really to, one, I love more, I always love, well, one more input. And two, also give individuals across the library a chance to engage with the collection and give opportunities for that. And so, one of the members of that team, Allison, has headed a program of a bookmark art contest that is launching this summer. And there will be three winners, and these three winners in the different categories, which is going to be juvenile, teen, and adult. Will have their artwork turned into bookmarks that will be available free at the library. So it's a great way for us to be able to share all the creative talent that we have here in the community. And also, the team provided their selection of different pieces, their favorite pieces, from our collection of Cowan and art pieces as inspiration. So that way, individuals can actually use all the different pieces we have to inspire their own artwork. This fall, we are actually going to be in collaboration with Megan, the team librarian. We are going to be launching the Cowan Club Sketchbook Project. Each month, we will email participants a prompt based on a piece of art from either the Cowan Museum Collection or the library's art collection. I forgot to mention, this is a team program. So they'll receive different tips and different suggestions on renderings, how to consider color and form, and how our pieces actually demonstrate these artistic and visual principles. So individuals will then have a chance to fill out their sketchbook. And then we're hoping to have an opportunity in the future to actually showcase the work that's created by the participants. We're also planning a program where an artist will come and speak to this club to talk to them about how they can discuss their artwork and how to actually convey their artistic ideas and intentions. And that brings me to the next part, which is, we are launching the inaugural Cowan Featured Artists. The Cowan Featured Artists will have the community case in the month of December and be able to show their work throughout the month. This is open to artists who work in clay as one of their mediums. They will also then present an artist talk to the public to talk about their work. And also, they will give a program, a presentation to the Team Cowan Club on how to talk and discuss their work. Collections, the transcribing of our digital records into Past Perfect, our museum collection management software, has been completed, which was great. It was great to get that project completed. I'm now working on the transcribing of our paper records, because we do have older paper records that have more information about the objects. So as we get that information added to these individual digital records, it's going to make this catalog of our collection much more robust and much more accurate of our holdings.
If I could ask a question?
Sure, sorry.
What's, no, you're fine. What's the oldest record then on paper that you found?
Well, well, okay, so about Cowan, I would say probably, probably the 60s.
Wow.
We actually have one from the early 60s, late 50s. That's a news article that talks about Caffron Wilder and about how they hosted some Cowan pieces as a special display in the museum. This was prior, of course, to the museum actually existing.
Being a museum, right?
Yeah. And in regards to the collection itself, pretty much the beginning of it. And that's actually when we received the items, which was in 1976. And then we eventually, of course, opened the museum in 1978.
Okay, thank you.
No, of course. Oldest collections of records that we have in general, I will say, we probably turn of the century. Yeah. For Rocky River specific, I will say 1920s, because I know we do have some early Rocky River High School, not only yearbooks, but also memorabilia from that time. So, and here, I apologize, I accidentally closed my notes, I do apologize. There we go. Oh, okay. The other thing that we are looking to do actually on that note is we are also looking to create digital records for all of our archives. This is something to make our collection a much more accessible to the public and also to make sure that we have essentially a concise catalog of what our holdings are. And that makes it much easier for our archives to be actively used by the public, by scholars, and by anyone interested in the history of Rocky River, our library, or the Cowan Museum or collection. We are currently conducting a location audit of all of our object collection, where we're going through and, you know, object by object, marking the current location of them. And this is in preparation for two different things. One, we're working towards the virtual collection access through Past Perfect Online. So that way, individuals will actually be able to search our collection at any time, and will be able to actually show the photos that we have of the pieces that we documented thus far. But also, the other reason that this is needed is that next year, we are due for a Cowan object appraisal and an art appraisal. So we are due for that for the five years. And then the last art appraisal was 2012, so this would make it a 10-year. So we are due for that. So I'm in preparation of trying to get different quotes and be able to submit them to administration for review, and then, of course, getting them into next year's budget for review. Oh, the other thing, if you've been library, you may have actually seen some artwork that you may have not seen for a bit. We were able to get The Elephant by Victor Schuckengoss installed between the AV room and the teen room. It had previously lived across from the elevator. It was removed during the bathroom renovations, and we were able to actually now find a location of its permanent home now. Additionally, the director's photos that were downstairs on the lower level have been relocated outside of admin. And the historic ceiling tiles donated by the Rocky River Women's Committee have been reinstalled after the installation of our new AV equipment in the auditorium. I also have worked towards getting new archival storage. So that way, as we are going through and creating the records for our archives, we're also then rehoming them in archival standard equipment that is going to be acid-free and make sure that we are preserving these documents and objects. And also, we were able this past December to purchase the scan station, which is a computer, high-resolution scanner, as well as a desk and chair to house it through the donation in memory of Rebecca, sorry, my notes are, Catterley, Rebecca Catterley. And that was donated by her daughter and because there was a desire to give funds towards libraries specifically for local history efforts. And that is all I have.
Well, that is a lot. It sounds like it's been a very productive year for you. It's so nice to hear about everything you accomplished and the plans moving forward. I really like the direction for the teams. That sounds really interesting. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this point in time to poor Greg? Greg, you are welcome to stay for the full meeting, but if you have somewhere else you'd rather go, you are also welcome to leave. Thank you so much.
Sure thing. Audra, did you have a question? I apologize, I thought I saw your hand.
No, I just wanted to thank you. It was really an interesting presentation. Appreciate it.
Oh, no, sure thing. Thank you so much, sorry.
Thank you. Well, I do, I did make a little jump over the public comment section. And so I just wanted to ask Jamie if we have any public comment for our meeting before we move on with the agenda.
We had nothing additional that was in our report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the business of the board. The first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes. And in your board packet, those minutes are on pages two through six. Do we have any corrections? All right, may I have a motion to approve the March meeting minutes?
I can move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
I was absent, so I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will second that. Melissa? Was there any additional discussion? Okay, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Benarski?
I will abstain, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
I'll abstain also not having been there.
Ms. Stittney?
Yes. I'm not sure if that motion passes. That is a good question. We've got three who voted on that. I'm not sure if that's considered passing.
We can check on that. It is the minutes, but we have three, we have a majority of those that were, that are here present.
Well, all right, well, thank you for that. Jill could not make it tonight, so moving on to our fiscal officer report, our finance committee report. I know Will, she said, Will has things to say, listen to Will, so Will, I'll pass the baton to you.
Okay, thanks. Well, you know, as typical, I let my written report speak for itself, and we'll obviously open that up to questions. But a couple of things that I did want to point out, just in addition to my written report, is, one, if you haven't done so already, and I don't know the status of this, and maybe Jamie knows more, but reach out to your local rep to ask them to back the PLF being remaining at one point or going up to 1.7%. The state revenue is going to decline if the tax cuts that they propose go through. So that, in addition to dropping the PLF to 1.6%, would have an impact, a significant impact on PLF funding for Rocky River Library. So if you have the opportunity, you should reach out and ask your rep if they'll back that amendment. Interest rates, the Fed kept interest rates, again, at the same basic zero rate, with little inclination that they're going to raise those. They have little fear of inflation still, even with the economy kind of hopefully ramping back up. But that could change still, I think, in the, at least for the rest of this year, for sure, that the interest rates are going to remain really low. So we anticipated that, obviously, we budgeted for it in our earnings for our reserve funds as well. So it's okay, it's just wanted to keep the board updated on that. And then the last thing is a note that I put in my packet, which is, I'm going to work on, you know, an additional report to give the board kind of this actual versus budget. Some of the stuff we look at now kind of lays out the budget for the whole year, and I think it is beneficial for the board to see kind of budget versus maybe where we would be budget-wise halfway through the year versus, like, historically as well. So it's not, it's not really divided by 12 months, because that really isn't accurate. But how do we compare it to historical information as well as budget, where we should be at this point versus where we actually are? Hopefully, my reports will be a lot clearer than the way I just stated it right now. That's my plan, so I have some time to work on it, put something together. And I plan to do that at the July meeting, so that'll be for the first six months.
So what you're saying, Will, is that if there's a typical expenditure that's in the first half of the year, we're going to be able to see that rather than dividing it up month by month.
Right.
Because 1/12 doesn't really mean anything in that regard.
Exactly, that's the idea. It's the same thing with revenue. When it comes to like real estate taxes, a huge chunk of money comes in the first two months, and then, you know, you don't see anything for a while. Well, that doesn't represent a 12-month breakdown, it's those two months. So I'm going to work a way to kind of show that to everybody. One of the other things I wanted to point out too is just to give people an idea of where we are sort of versus, you know, because of this weird COVID year that we had last year and kind of still in it. I just wanted to give you some historical reference. 2018, so if you look at the year-to-date PLF for 2021, $185,000 is the year-to-date PLF that we've received. Last year, year-to-date was 175. Historical reference, 2018 and 2019 were both 167. So we're still performing better than both of those two years. Same thing for year-to-date actual for real estate taxes. You look at 1.9 million 2021, 1.8 million 2020, 1.8 million 2019, 1.75 million 2018. So again, we're doing okay when it comes to those, our big sources of revenue. You know, we're doing all right, especially considering what's going on and what we thought we would be a year ago from now, or we, you know, last year at this time where we thought, you know, the sky was falling, and that's just not the case. So just want to give the board some kind of reference on that. And then same thing, with historical expenses, they're all right, 2018 through 2021, all right in the range of about 1.1 million. Total, this is total expenditures. So expenditures remaining relatively flat and revenue performing basically the same. So the general gist of this is, we're okay, and we're doing okay. I'll open that up to any additional questions about my report.
Well, Will, I just want to say, I know Jill was very, very interested in getting some kind of additional report in the, in the Finance Committee. The two of you talked about what different reports might be. I think she was very grateful that you were willing to be open to that and kind of figure out, well, what would be the best interim-type report? Is quarterly too much? Is semi-annually a little better? And so I think she really appreciated that conversation in Finance Committee.
For communicating with the representative, can somebody send out a couple bullet points of what the right things are to say?
That is something Jamie and I can work on, and I can get out to you.
It doesn't have to be, you know, two, three bullet points, just, just a message.
I had sent an email to all of you. I know I've sent a lot of emails to all of you recently. I will look at that up again, but I think there was specific, I think there was a specific ask from OLC as well as how to get ahold of Senator Dolan, because it is in the Senate right now. So Senator Dolan is the one that we want to reach out to. And he typically is supporter of libraries. He is also the Senate Finance Chair. So definitely someone good to reach out to. But yeah, we can get something out to you hopefully soon, or I'll find that email and send that again.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Sorry I missed it.
No, I suspect if you, if you search engine your emails for OLC, it's probably specifically in one of those OLC emails as well. Yeah, that's a good point, though. If we're all on the same page, I think that's a good idea, Dave.
Yeah, and specifically, and specifically pointing out to them that, you know, there needs to be an understanding on, you know, legislators' part, that we are not eligible for federal government funding. That's not something that we receive. And I, I think that is kind of like a misnomer, that they all think that we have this pot of money that we can fall back on, and that's, that's not the case. We rely on the state to, you know, that's why Ohio libraries are where they are, is because of the PLF and the state support. So we need to keep that going.
Thank you. All right, any other questions about either what Will has presented here today or about the finance report in your board, which is page seven, starting page seven? No? Okay, may I have a motion to approve of the March financials?
So move, this is Audra.
Thank you, Audra. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jenny, thank you, Jenny. Any additional discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stittney?
Yes. All right, the motion passes, thank you. We do have a gift report today, which is on page 15 of your packet. Jamie, do you want to say anything? Or, and I know that we have a really extraordinary gift from Lois Misko that's in that report that's recognized there.
Yeah, so I talked about it a little bit last month. Lois has been a longtime user of our training department and our training programs. And so this was the largest gift I know that she's given. She did give a sizable gift last year as well. That gift was specified specifically for training. This one was just for general use of the library.
All right, any other questions or comments about the gift report? I will move that we approve the March gift report. That's Melissa. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Any additional discussion at this time? If not, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stittney?
Yes. Thank you, Trent. All right, that passes. Okay, so I, I know we're moving into the Director's Report, and I just want to say, Jamie, this was an extraordinary Director's Report. It is very clear to all of us how much work you put into, not just this report, but responding to all sorts of patron comments and inquiries and with civility and respect. And I think we're all very impressed with that, so I'm going to hand it over to you.
Well, thank you, and Trent certainly deserves a lot of that appreciation as well. He's, it's certainly been a tag-team approach. We were comparing notes today, I was like, how many calls did you get? And how many calls did I get? So I'll open it up to, if there's anything specifically about my written report. If not, we'll just, because we do have a lot of business, I'd like to kind of move through the business. But if there's any questions about what I wrote, if not, we will move into the Local History Room and Archives Policy. That is a policy that Greg Hatch and Trent worked on. There was a question on this policy, there's, so there's a small, there's a minor change we're going to make that Melissa suggested. We forgot the use of an "of," "of" by the, where we talk about, I think, cloud-based services. And then also, Melissa, my understanding was you were trying to, you were questioning the use of some of the legal terminology. And Greg, Greg did verify that that was from official copyright law. So I wasn't sure if you were questioning the use or if you just wanted to clarify.
No, so under the, in the policy, under the paragraph titled Reproduction, our policy reads, must be used only for personal study or research. our policy reads must be used only for personal study or research. And since the actual language is quoted in, in the blue, they're used for any purpose, private study, scholarship or research. I guess what I was suggesting is to take that official language and put it in our policy since it's slightly more expansive. It does have a scholarship component in it. You know, if you get that, that legal language, you might as well just put that right in your policy.
Okay, so Trent, so that is, that's actually what Trent thought. So that's where we weren't sure. So in his, that, when, if, if and when you approve this policy, it will be stated in that way. We'll use the, the correct, the full language.
Do we want that language under reproduction only? Or do we want to use that same language under access where we say research? So the purpose of research?
Well, in the blue, again, in that blue section at the bottom of the policy, it says private, is that photocopy or reproduction is not to be used. And that, that's where the quote begins. So I thought it only had to do with reproduction.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so with those two changes, were there any other comments, questions or changes? May I have a motion to approve the, the local history room and archives policy? I will move that.
Okay.
As, as amended, Audra, did you want to second that?
I will second.
Okay. Was there any additional discussion at this time? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stikney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trent. All right, that passes.
Yeah, and then we move into our Cowan donations again. It's, we're on a pattern and I'm, I'm really excited. I told Greg that artichoke vase, I think it's the vase we're getting in this donation. We, he, we do already have a artichoke lamp that has a drip, the, it's drip. But I really love that artichoke. So I was really happy to get the, that donation. So I, I, I think I was there when Mark Bassett first showed it off in his personal collection at one of the Cowan symposiums. So, you know, that's just a personal thing for me, but.
What are our storage challenges at this point with all of the Cowan materials?
I don't think that we have, Greg, are you still here?
I am.
You're still here. Would you, would you answer that question?
Absolutely. So actually, that's a big other reason for the location audit is that our current storage is not being used in the most efficient way. Where pieces that are in locations that have very tall shelves are very small. So there, there's, so the kind of the goal for our, our location audit is to see where everything is and then begin the rearranging to make it much more efficient. And additionally, the past budget for twenty twenty one, I had requested and it was approved for two different cases from the company. We're looking at Gaylord archival, which are two new cases to actually house more objects. And this will also make changing out exhibitions a lot easier.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so with that, may I have a motion to approve of the Cowan donation from Mark Bassett in memory of Cecil George?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dave. A second?
I can second. This is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any additional discussion at this time? If not, a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stikney?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes and we are so grateful that we have community members who make these wonderful donations to enrich our collection. We're very fortunate.
Right.
And we have another donation.
Yeah, so this one, as, as Greg mentioned, is actually was a long term loan. And one of the things I think Greg failed to mention in his report earlier is that he is meticulous in record keeping and he has done a very good job of going through and making sure that every piece is tracked and that we know we have specific ownership on each one of those pieces. So he's been in contact with quite a few people to make sure that, hey, you know, that this is on loan, who actually owns it, and then also reached out and said, you know, there's a couple of pieces where we said, all right, well, we'll continue this on loan for another year. We'll check back with you. This was actually one that the patron decided that she would turn over to the museum and it's one that he wanted. So.
Wonderful.
That's very nice. All right. All right. I will move that we approve of the Cowan donation from Wanda and is her last name pronounced Jackie? Or I'm not quite sure how her last name was pronounced. So I apologize if I'm mispronouncing it. So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I will second. It's Audra.
Thank you, Audra. All right. Any additional discussion? If not, we can have a roll call vote, please.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I was, I was, I was just, just curious about the stipulation. It'll be on permanent display. I assume that's not a problem for anybody?
No, we, we had, we had discussed that. Greg, if you want to expound upon that a little bit, it was really good that you stayed.
Well, the, the main reason why we won't have an issue is that this is actually one of the pieces that was made pre Cowan pottery studio. So it actually exists prior to the creation of the studio. And additionally, it has one of the rarest things. It actually has Cowan's signature engraved in the bottom. And so since it's such a rare example of his early production and one of the goals for the exhibitions is to make sure that we maintain a display that shows the timeline and progression of Cowan and the studio. I don't see any issue with keeping this on permanent display. Also, it is a relatively small piece.
Yeah, and, and so you can use that discussion as, we're not setting a precedent here. It's, this is a very important piece.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Okay. Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stikney?
Yes.
All right, that passes. And thank you, I'm, I'm assuming both Greg and Jamie, you, you send out thank you notes, letters, and you've had conversations and we're grateful you represent us in that gratitude. So thank you for that. All right. Jamie, do you want to talk about the storybook?
Yeah, so the story, the storybook walk, I'm sure you've, I would hope that you've all seen the laminated pages that are on wooden stakes around the library and have been there since COVID started. This was one of the very first things that we did to engage our readers, even though we were closed. This is something that had been done before. And when we got to the pandemic, I reached out to Christine and I said, is this something you can do and I'd like it to change weekly and, you know, so that we can move forward with this? And she has done a great job with, with doing that. And so one of the ideas was to make this a permanent installation. And so you'll see the pictures that I included in the packet. This is a, it was budgeted for and it's actually only around five thousand dollars to get all of these. Our building guys will be installing them and cementing them. But we got to a point and I was like, you know, we're going to be cementing stuff into our property. It's probably something that the board, we should make sure that the board agrees on that. So, so this is what, where we're at. I, Stephanie created the little map kind of. It's basically what we're doing now, but in a more permanent fashion. This will have, this is also going to go through the city's architecture and design review. Just be, I, I, I think that we're going to present it to them. I'm not quite sure exactly whether it falls under those guidelines, but we're, we're just making sure that we, we, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is. So, yeah, so that's, you know, this has gotten rave reviews from patrons literally of all ages. And a lot of people love this. It also goes with just the whole idea of the walkable city where the city's encouraging people to get out and walk and it allows them to do something together while they're, while they're outside.
I, does anyone want to comment or have questions for Jamie about that? I'm an enthusiastic supporter.
Yes, yes, agreed.
Yeah, I think it's great that you're doing it and I think it's very nice that you brought it to the board for approval, even though it's a no brainer.
My grandkids love storybook walks, so they're really cool.
Good, that's good to hear.
Good. All right. There was another discussion as well, which I, I think that begins in your packet on page thirty.
Yeah.
Jamie, do you want to talk about that agreement?
Yeah, so this is part of the strategic plan and this is also something that we had discussed a little bit around budget time because this is something that's going to come out of one of the special revenue funds. And so as part of the diversity inclusion initiatives that we want to take as a library, we felt that we needed to do something to make sure that everybody has the training that they need as well that the library itself, so administration, our policies, our procedures are, are open and welcoming to all of our staff as well. So we are not the first ones in the city to work with the diversity center. The schools have their own diversity center employee that is on board, I think, full time as a consultant, Kai Green. He's talked to us quite a few times as part of the curriculum committee. And the city, which we help co-sponsor, they're using the diversity center for the local nonprofit groups, which Trent is our liaison to those trainings. I think the city might be working with them on their own as well. So this is something where I wanted to pass the agreement on for you to see. We don't, I, I didn't necessarily anticipate approving it tonight just because of the, the language and stuff. But, but it is somewhat simple. So we could approve it tonight if the board felt ready. The one change that was added to this after I passed it by the county prosecutor was he just simply suggested setting a cap on it based on their price list. And so we had them add the paragraph that, you know, because this is basically on retainer. And I think it's important too for the, when we get to the point where the board moves on it, that they will not, will not incur additional expenses beyond the fifteen thousand without written agreement between the two groups. So we make sure that, that we are truly working together as we move forward. The other aspect of this is we actually, when we originally started talking to them, it was around, it's around a thirty thousand dollar project to do the various things that we wanted to do. And so we decided to split it between fiscal years. So that extends the training and makes sure that we are thorough with our training, that we're not just checking the boxes I've said before. We, we don't just say, yeah, we, we took a training. I know Trent and I have already taken very many trainings ourselves and webinars and stuff. So half of this, starting this summer, and it would extend a little bit into twenty twenty one. And then we would have additional money in the budget in twenty twenty two to continue the training. And then in the third year, I would imagine it would be much less and we could then kind of really finesse where we want to go or what we've, what we've all learned together, what we might need additional work on, et cetera.
All right. Does anyone have questions about the agreement as it, as it exists? I know I had a couple of questions, but I wanted to see if anyone else had questions. I know we're just in the discussion phase and I, we really appreciate getting something in advance to look at it before we vote on it. That's really helpful. Thank you, Jamie. I, one of my questions was, do you know, and this isn't specified in the agreement, do you know if the trainings at this point will be virtual or face to face?
I think it depends on the training and who is in it. So they can be, they can be both. I think if it made, you know, I think depending on what the training is, we can do stuff where, you know, it, it is on Zoom. Sherry really, I can, I can get the answer to that as well. But I think it really is, there's an idea that it could be a mixture of both.
Okay. My other question was, I saw there was a fifty participant limit and does that cover, is that a limit large enough to accommodate our employees?
That would, no, there would be, there'd be multiple sessions in that, which we would never, it would be hard to get. The only time we really can get all of our employees together would be on staff day. So we might be able to do, and even then, we probably wouldn't do a full fifty. You know, like we would, we would maybe do, offer the training for half of the participants in the morning. And then the other half would do something else. And then in the afternoon, it would go there. But we have seventy three is our total payroll with, with subs and, you know, our, our extreme part time. So, but we, we would be okay with, with a maximum of fifty per session.
Okay, that's, those were my two questions.
Okay, I, I have one. What are you looking to start this, Jamie? Because point four and six in the contract says August through December. Whereas the actual cost estimate says September. And September through April is actually eight months and August through April is nine months.
Yes. So I think the, the differences there, and I can verify again with Jeff, but the difference is that they're going to, they would start working with Sherry in August. So they're going to work with Sherry as far as like they would review policies. They're not going to do too much with hiring practices. She's already talked to them a little bit. But, you know, hiring practices, our policies, some of our procedures, onboarding, those type of things. So it would, it would start with Sherry is my understanding and then actual training would be, would be September. But we can verify that.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned with that or needing an answer. I just wanted to clear up any inconsistencies that might be there. Because it says four month period, August through December, which is actually five months.
Right. Okay.
All right. Okay, so I think, I think I'd prefer to vote on this next time if that's okay? Just because we're missing a couple of people and we can kind of get some of those details ironed out that get that additional paragraph in there, things like that.
Yeah, and that, yeah, completely, completely fine.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. All right. So we have a personnel report and that's on page thirty eight of your packet.
Yes. So this is the, the personnel report we've been warning you about. So you'll see here that there, there's basically the, we have our appointments. So Christine Lee in children's and Nicole Martin in adult services. So they were offered the supervisor positions. And then Cal, you'll see her name twice because she was formerly an outreach assistant and we have moved her to children's services associate. And then Mary, who is also in the adult services department, she is going to be also working. So she'll have additional hours where she's working as the outreach assistant. And then Melissa at the very bottom, through various, Trent, do you remember? I think somebody, I think Matt Stock left? Was there somebody else that left?
Matt Stock was the one that left in children's.
Okay, so there were additional hours that needed to be. Okay, so there were additional hours that needed to be filled. So Melissa's part-time, she's been, she had been helping out while various people were on leave, various stages of leave. And so now with Charlotte in place, and things have kind of settled down, we've determined that we want to make that a permanent transition for her. So she would get additional hours.
All right, thank you.
So Jamie, does this complete the plan for the supervisors that we've been discussing?
We'll have one more next month.
One more.
So the building services assistant two position was, it was offered, but it'll, it wasn't in the timeframe for the meeting. So it'll be on next month. And then you'll hopefully see the graphics, the communications assistant, visual communications assistant position filled as well. They start that interview on Friday. So those will be the, the final of what we've been approving lately.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, do you need to approve of the personnel report?
I'm sorry, Melissa, one, one question. Is there a plan for, or is there an updated org chart anywhere? Or will there be at any point?
So we put, we put the organization chart on the board site.
Okay.
So that should already include the new positions.
Okay.
And that's just by position, that isn't by names. If you wanted specifically by names, it's a huge report, so we just do the position.
Not necessary, just the, just the positions, but that's perfect. Thank you so much.
I'm looking at it right now. It is updated. It is there. Yep, good question. All right, may I have a motion to approve the personnel report for March?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Do I have a second?
A second, it's Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any additional discussion? If not, we can have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. Thank you. Okay, so we are on to my report. So I did poll, Jamie and I talked about this. I did poll all of you as to your comfort level returning to face-to-face meetings. And everyone is comfortable doing that. So we will be resuming face-to-face meetings in a socially distant masked way. And that will start in May. And we will, we will look for our summer meeting date to also be, our retreat to also be face-to-face. So we will talk about that and get back to all of you with a poll for dates and some information about where that will be. Let's see. Oh, I did want to ask if anyone had any questions or comments about the additional departmental reports that were included in your packet? We, I always appreciate these reports. I always go to the statistical measure of the month first. I kind of read around, I don't always read them in order. And I liked that, that one of your staff members or library staff members was the one who suggested the statistical measure of the month. So that this idea came from somewhere else, I like that idea. And I, Trent, I really appreciate your new policy update section. I really like that. I think that's going to be very helpful for all of us to follow what's going on there. Anyone else have any comments or questions about the departmental reports?
I just wanted to say, I don't know if you could pass it along to the, the, all of the individuals that put out these reports. I enjoy them so much. I feel like they give such a great insight to what's going on in the library. And even if I don't have a question, I feel like I learn something every time. So thank you so much.
Agreed.
Yeah, did all that.
I, and so I did let all of the managers know last month, because I think the comments were pretty much the same. So I did let them know that you all appreciated those and that you did read them. I think that that, if nothing else, the, just, just the affirmation that you actually read them. You know, sometimes they might think, oh, why am I even doing this? But I did let them know that you appreciate them and you read them. So I did pass that along, and I will do it again.
Yes, well, I, I mean, I always, I get caught up on the little details, like the barcode issue that they weren't scanning correctly. I mean, it's just a little detail like that, but then someone figured out, oh, well, that's because these were off-center. And I mean, just these unique little details that, you know, only in a library. I did also watch the film festival movie that the Rocky River Library co-sponsored about the Harold Longform, and I very much appreciated that documentary. And I thought it was a good pairing for the library. So whoever, whoever made that selection with the film festival, that was great. Okay, I think that's all I have for my president's report. So moving on to committee reports, do we have any report for buildings and grounds? We do not have. I thought, we have a meeting set.
Well, Billy, yeah, we had a meeting, no, we had a meeting set. And unfortunately, Greg was not able to make it that day, so we had to reschedule it. But Krista did, so Dan and Dave, Krista did send that email out asking for times again, so.
I think it's set now. It is.
Oh, it is?
The third at 10:00 a.m.
Oh, okay, I guess you know more than I do. I missed that email. Okay.
We all responded, so she can schedule.
Yeah.
All right, good.
So that's good. And so personnel.
Jamie and I met yesterday, actually, and so we're going to move forward on a couple of things in the coming weeks.
All right, thank you, Jenny. All right. All right, so I think I, we need a motion to move into executive session. It is now on my many computers, 7:56. I will move that we move into executive session to discuss legal matters. Do I have a second?
I will second, it's Audra.
All right, roll call vote to move into executive session. Or is there any additional discussion? I don't think there will be additional discussion on that roll call vote.
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. Thank you, Trent. All right, that passes. All right, thank you. Okay, we are, it is now 8:51, and we are back in our meeting for some new business. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve of the purchase of a new electronic sign for $31,961 from Signature Sign Company.
This is Audra, so move.
Thank you, Audra. Do I have a second?
A second, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Any additional discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please? Trent?
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzoni?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. Thank you. All right, that motion passes. Is there any other, a new business? Okay, so there being no further business, I move that we adjourn this meeting at 8:52 p.m. This is our last, hopefully, remote meeting. I look forward to seeing you all face-to-face.
Thank you.
Hope to see you next month.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.